You're all sat down?
Yep.
If you want to rise, we'll start the meeting off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome everybody to come tonight and if you have cell phones, we ask you to have them turned off so we don't get interrupted in the middle of something. And can we have a roll call?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Here.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Here.
Patrick DuHane.
Yep.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
Steven Iham.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
Brett Baker.
Here.
Matthew Patel.
Here.
And can we have a motion that we had the meeting advertised as required?
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
I'm sorry.
And roll call vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And can we have a motion to approve last month's minutes and to waive the reading of those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
Second.
And roll call vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And we can go to old business with Mr. Stephen.
We have two requests for rehearings for old businesses that would like to come back next month and talk to you guys. Uh, one is a appeal twenty-two fifty-seven from two thousand and twenty-two, Brian Donahue at eleven fourteen Cumberland Head Road. Constructed eight by five deck would encroach eight feet into the front yard setback. Uh, the second one would be a request for a rehearing. This has got a couple of dates on it, uh, appeal number sixteen sixty-four from two thousand and oh-six. Daniel Marshall, uh, for Brennan Buick GMC.
Calhoun?
Uh, three eighty-three Route Three in a commercial zone approved signs in excess of what was allowed in the flagpole in a height over forty feet. Uh, we had signage, we had a couple of different properties, they cleared out their back lot, the faces, uh, Sam's Club Gas Station. And they put a maybe four or three by twenty, three by thirty sign off the back with no permit, no application, says Brennan signs. We gave them an OTR and said you can't just put signs up, uh, without permits. I don't know if they respond, but if you go to get gas at Sam's, you can turn around and look, it's a giant orange back building. And so it's got no permits, so both of them would like to come back, uh, and see you guys next month.
So appeal number two-two-five-seven, anybody have any questions or comments that they'd like to hear on that one? Grant the motion to, uh, to come back to rehear?
Yeah.
Okay, so we want to make a call on that one?
Grant the motion.
In a second?
A second.
And roll call vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And appeal number sixteen sixty-four for Brennan. Come back to hear about their signage rules.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
And a second? Okay, roll call vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander. Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And for new business.
Are we ready to start?
So, we haven't been able to get a hold of him, his voicemail is full, he hasn't called us, us back. And he hasn't gone on to Zoom yet, so we can go down to our last one and come back and sit here.
Okay. Technical difficulties.
So that would be number...
Two-three-one-two. Mr. Elders?
Here.
Right in the center.
Have a seat up there.
All the way up there.
You get to go.
So now you get to go first because we have technical difficulties on the other one, we're still on Cumberland Head. Uh, we are at twenty-three twelve thirteen Bristol Road. Uh, looking for an area variance, request to be allowed to expand a pre-existing non-conforming deck with an addition that encroaches five feet into the front yard setback. On the lakeside, leaving forty-five foot to the property line, which is a non-conforming, with a fifty-foot front, front yard setback in our fourth district. Whenever we have lakefront, we have two front yards, one is the lakefront to whatever the deed reads, and then one to the front where the road touches. Or right-of-way touches in this case, because I believe Bristol Road is a private road. Alan, not a lot of people travel Bristol Road unless you're, uh...
Live on it.
Unless you live on it, you know somebody, so Alan can kind of go over the details of where Bristol Road is on Cumberland Head.
So Mr. Chairman, this is Cumberland Head Road here. And this, this right here little sliver is what we call Prestige Drive, uh, subdivision up this way. This is Algonquin part. You come down, just before you get to the lake, there's a private road that cuts across right through here. And this second lot here is what we're talking about. So it's all zoned R four. Little closer view, you can see this is the lot we're talking about, this is the house up here up front. So on the lakeside of the house, you can see there's an existing deck right here that comes out his door here. He'd like to extend it here to the end of the building and then run a, a...
Walk.
Walkway up to the doors on the side here. So here you can see a little closer, there's that door right there, he wants to walk up and then he wants to fill in this area here. And this is what he's shown on his plan here, so he's filling in this here, the deck's already ten foot wide, the existing part, he's just extending it out and then went up this way, five feet wider. Okay, so anything you'd like to add to the board, welcome to say.
Um, yeah, I, I, we didn't want to encroach, uh, towards the lake any further because we have four kids and, and we need them anyways. So, um, and if you look at the wall, it actually angles back and gets closer to the house, so the, with the, where we're going is actually...
Further away.
Gets a little bit further away from the lake, we're still being encroaching. Um, and the reason that we want to extend that deck is, it looks pretty big, but where they have the stair and then you can't see the other, there's another set of stairs that comes down towards that big vine. Um, well, we tend to have a lot of people over and we have a large family already. And when we put chairs out there, we're not even looking to have dine out there, but when you put chairs out there, it gets really packed. And so we just wanted to extend it. Um, so that's like eleven feet to the corner of the house and then we, the walkway is five feet, so that's basically sixteen feet. Um, that would be...
And it's no, no closer to the, your...
No.
Your lake.
It actually gets a little bit less as you go.
Right, uh, I'm going to open the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And seeing nobody's raised a hand, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go to the board members if they have any questions or comments or concerns that they would like to have visit. Mary Ann, you're okay?
Yeah. So it's, it's just because it's a non-conforming structure.
Right, it's previous non-conform, so expansion of that triggers a variance, but he's also at the full distance from the, the lakeside.
Yeah.
So that doesn't really crawl underneath the crawl space.
All right. Uh, if I do the balancing test on this one, we'd be looking at whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. And to increase the size of the deck without encroaching further into a setback, this would be the logical method. Undesirable change in neighborhood character, nearby properties. There, these are all pretty much tight lots out there and getting closer to the lake as it keeps on eroding. Excuse me. Whether the request is substantial and it's actually less of a, a variance because of the angle that he's at with that lakefront. Uh, whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see any of that happening. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created and needing more space is not self-created, so... Anybody else have anything that they would like to say or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And show hands on that. And roll call vote?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
Have a good night.
I appreciate it.
Honor.
What?
Better call.
Yes.
You guys have a great one.
Hi, you're just calling from Rick Kemmel, please leave a message and I'll get back.
He's striking me out.
Incoming call.
That's him probably.
Good afternoon, John Klosberg.
Hi, uh, my name is Rick Kemmel.
Hello.
And I'm on, I'm supposed to be on a Zoom meeting at six o'clock.
Okay, we're ready for you.
Okay, I, I never received any kind of a, a code to go onto Zoom like on my computer.
It's on, it's on that same link?
So all I have is my cellphone right now.
Hey Rick, did you get the, uh, the link that had the Zoom, uh, link on it?
I forwarded that.
I... No, I can't, I can't say that I saw it, I mean, I looked for it.
Have you checked?
I did get a confirmation that there was, you know, the meeting tonight, uh, and at six o'clock, but there was no, I did not see any kind of Zoom information attached to it.
Hey, we're, we're going to write a send to you here in just a second.
Okay, perfect.
Check on the bottom of the email, it's going to be highlighted, you double-click on it, then, uh, Brett will let you in.
Okay.
And if not, check your junk mail.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I did not do that.
Let me send it to him. All right, Rick, I just sent it to you.
Okay, so thank you very much. There it is.
So while you're trying to log in, I'm going to go ahead and present your project and then we'll get back to you, okay?
Sure, hey, I'm, I'm still trying to find the link here.
So this is appeal, you're in front of a zoning board of appeals, there's five members, we're on Zoom, uh, just for the record, this is appeal number twenty-three eleven. Walter, C mail for three Firehouse Lane. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-three-ten Walter, C mail for three Firehouse Lane. First one's an area variance, he's asking to re, request to be allowed to construct a six-foot covered deck on the roadside of the house that would encroach forty-four... Feet into the fifty-foot front yard setback, leaving six feet to the front property line and encroaching nine point four-four feet into the twenty-foot minimum side yard setback. Leaving ten point five-six feet to the side yard property line, which does not meet the tom, total sum of the fifty-foot setbacks in an R four district. Alan's going to go over some of the details with, uh, with the board, Walter, then, uh, once you're logged in, you'll be, should be able to see our screen also.
Okay, thank you.
So the, uh, the second one, so there's two variances being requested, that one being on the, the roadside. This is also another front yard setback because it's on the lakeside, which is considered a front yard. Uh, appeal number twenty-three eleven at three Firehouse Lane, an area variance request to be allowed to construct a twelve-by-twenty-seven point six-inch partially covered deck on the lakeside of the home... Of the house that encroaches twenty-one feet to the required fifty-foot front yard setback, leaving twenty-nine to the front property line on the lakeside, encroaching ten foot... Six inches into the twenty-foot minimum side yard setback, leaving nine foot four to the side yard property line, and it does not meet the total sum of the fifty-foot side yard setback in an R four district. So we'll go over the, now that we have, there's two separate variances, front yard and the front yard, lakes, we'll call lakeside and roadside. Uh, if you guys aren't familiar with Cumberland Head, Alan's going to go over the details of where we are on Cumberland Head.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is Cumberland Head, uh, McDonough, almost McDonough Highway coming in right here. So as you get off the fire department, it's right over here, you come down Firehouse Lane, it's this outside road right here, dead ends at the end. We're looking at the second to last parcel right here on the lakeside. You can see this is all zone four, but these are all pre-existing non-conforming lots. But here's what we're looking at, it's the second parcel right here. So when this was taken, this was the, uh, the footprint of the house. Here's what it looks like today, so they're looking to put a six-foot deck here on the front part of the house. I just want to show that there's a privacy fence here, this is a gate going to the backyard of this house, so right here along this line, probably about six feet out from this wall is where the property line runs coming out. Subject system's over here. This is the backyard, so he's looking to put the, the second variances for the deck in the back here that would be on top of his, this is the sea wall, this is a shed over here on the side. And this is in between the two houses, this is the last house on the right, so from this point to this point, this is his side yard setback. And this is the plan he provided right here, that you should have in your...
Whoa, one second, Mr. Silver, can you, can you now see, I, I see that you've joined our meeting, but you can't have the audio on?
Yeah, I can, I see, um, I see video, but I'm not, I'm not hearing you through my iPad.
Correct, we'll, we'll only be using the phone call as the audio, um, our...
Okay.
My system doesn't coincide well with the, the laptop.
Okay, perfect, I'm in, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm turning it over to you, you can explain, uh, what it is you'd like to do and why you want to do it.
Okay, well, thanks for taking the time to meet with me, uh, uh, you know, remotely, I appreciate that, uh, I live in Florida and I was just up in the area last week. Unfortunately, time wasn't such that, uh, I could attend in person, so I appreciate, uh, this, this Zoom call here. Uh, as Alan mentioned, uh, there's a couple of things I would like to sell on the, on a cover porch on the, on the front of the house by the front door, as well as one on the lakeside, um, one on the lakeside of the house. Um, when I submitted the, um, the forms, I included a letter, um, you know, uh, I understand, you know, a lot of properties are grandfathered in and just because I want to do something doesn't mean that I can because other people have done it, so I understand that. Um, but I just want to let everybody know, I, I've got an adult son who, uh, was born with a serious physical disability. And to compound that, he broke his hip a couple, a couple of years ago, and he really struggled to be mobile. So we were hoping that he would take this into consideration, it would just give, uh, you know, my son, uh, some additional space to go out, he has a hard time walking on uneven surfaces... Surface like, you know, the lawn or the driveway. So, you know, I wouldn't say he's housebound, but he finds it very difficult for him to get out and out the back, so I was hoping I could put something on the back of the house that would allow him to be able to be outside, uh, without have to, you know, exit, uh, access stairs constantly to go up and down. Just, just struggling extremely with that. Um...
Could you actually do your front portion first, please? That would be the first variance.
Oh, okay, I'm terribly sorry.
That's okay.
Um... Yeah, so, you know, the, the front porch, um, you know, um, there's other houses that have the front, you know, front porch is on the street. I don't think what I'm asking for is, is, uh, my porch, my front porch will not protrude close to the road from what I can see than the house does. There's a little niche in the corner of that, uh, where that, where the porch dies in to meet the house, then it extends out towards, uh, where my leach field is. So I'm hoping I can get that L-shaped, um, piece of decking put in there and have a covered entrance, so, you know, when we're trying to get my son into the house, we're not standing in the rain, uh, inclement weather. Uh, it gives, you know, some space for us to bring in groceries and stuff without getting soaked standing at the front door.
Where would you park the car in your plan?
I'm sorry?
Where would you park the car in the plan?
Well, uh, that's, that's a good question. Um, I don't know how much room I have left over, whether I have enough room to, uh, park the existing driveway that's still there. There's still some of the, uh, it was a broken up kind of pavement that, that's still in place after the septic. Uh, I was hoping I could just reuse that again instead of having to build something new and, and which would require more permits. Um, so I would, I would hope to be able to just reuse what I already have there.
That is actually his, uh, septic field right there where the driveway is?
Yeah.
How's that going to work for absorption?
Well, that's, I mean, partially, um, this distribution box is still, uh, fair, I don't know what the distance between that distribution box to, to the road is, but, um, I was hoping I could use that spot or... I guess I hadn't really given that much thought.
You can see the four covered things are sticking out of the ground.
Right.
Yeah.
But then that, that pipe goes all the way over to the absorption that there, or the lead.
You don't want to park on your...
No.
No, absolutely not, no, no, I understand.
So what's he talking about parking on this side?
There's a sewer system there, you guys.
Wait, your turn.
You get eternity.
All right, so where the existing piece of driveway is now is where the absorption bed is.
Yeah, I mean, what he's talking about here, see this pavement right here?
Yeah.
That's what he's talking about, parking on with the absorption is here, but if you go back and look...
Yeah.
Here, right, so that pavement is probably, here's the, here's the edge of the road, that pavement is probably sitting right here in the right of way.
Yeah. But he doesn't realize, he, he can't tell us how many feet he has. He's got six feet to the lot line. From the corner of the, that L-shaped deck.
You know, kind of, kind of unfortunately, but the front door is on the, uh, leach field side of the house, so I, I couldn't enter the house from, from further away from that.
So Rick, I'm, I'm thinking what they're, they're looking at is, okay, so they say no to the front porch. Where do you, where do you park anyway? Because...
Where do I park?
Well...
Will I park after this?
Well, no, 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 right, right now, where do you park when you go to that house?
Uh, I pulled right up in front of the distribution tank there.
Was it parallel parking or per, uh, perpendicular?
Oh, gosh, I, I, I want to say I pulled in there, uh, parallel, but, you know, I, I was jumped out, I, I was meeting a subcontractor there, so I, you know, I didn't really pay attention to how much of my rear end, if any, was sticking into the street.
Because we did have a letter that had concerns on parking at that location, so...
Rick, I'm just going, this is Steve, the code officer. It's just, it's highly not suggested to pull across your leach line, leach field, or your distribution box, or the pipe that's going from the distribution box over there. We have this thing called frost in the ground, and when you put a car over top of a pipe like that, it can snap it and then you have a lot of issues. So this is North Country, I'm sure most places have public water, public sewer, but unfortunately here you only have public water. So by parking on a leach field, you're, you're not supposed to park on your leach field, obviously you can crush those, but even more the pipe...
Right.
Going from the tanks, those four, see the four baffles? Where the four baffles or three baffles or four, however many are sticking out of there, you don't want to park on those.
Correct. Now, if, if I can find a way to, um, I don't know, uh, would you let me, uh, you know, put some concrete on either side of that, so, and bridge that with something else? Um, so when I, like, could pour some concrete on top of it to encase that pipe? Would that free me up to, to park there?
Yeah. I, I can't really answer that question for you, I could tell you if you put a concrete pad there, then you don't have to be here for this variance.
He's just talking about his car.
He's talking about driving over the leach field, but...
In order, in order to protect the line underneath it, that's what he's looking at.
Which would be very bad if you ever had to replace it.
So I, so what I'm, what I'm kind of hearing is, uh, I've got a leach field in front of my house, and now I have no place to park my car.
What it sounds like, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds it.
So what do I do? I mean, this, this was all approved, you know, I, I assume this was approved by the, the county or something, I mean...
Yeah, they, they grew up second.
So I, I would certainly not look, look into, um, putting in a system on, on a, where I couldn't even park my car over there. I mean, I wouldn't, you know, there's no way I would even buy this place, so I knew I couldn't put a car in there.
Who? Who did the, uh, the septic system, do you know?
Um, yeah, I do.
Was it RMS or James Moser?
I'm sorry?
Was it RMS or James Moser?
Uh, RMS did the, uh, I don't know, I'm trying to find my septic permit, I hope that's mine. Uh, RMS did all the... You know, see, all the architectural drawings, I think they may have done the, uh, the septic as well, but I'm, I don't have that, I'm sorry.
So, I would recommend you go back to them and, and ask them, what are your restrictions and, or if you do have restrictions, how can you mitigate those restrictions in order to park your vehicle there?
Okay.
Since they're the ones who designed it?
Yep. Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, by putting a front porch in or not putting a front porch in, how that affects anything, because even if you don't put a front porch in, you still have the same problem.
Yeah.
So...
Exactly.
If the board looks at...
So I would need, I'm, I'm sorry, so I would need some kind of an engineer solution and bring it back to you?
For that front porch, I think that, I think the board would like to see something like that, yes.
Definitely.
But that's just for parking, the, so the question was just parking the car. Now we go back to the porch issue and there's several, it, it says the least, about, the least amount variance requested. Why can't you just put concrete there and not a structure?
Well, I'm looking for a place to hopefully when I'm, you know, when my son, when he does get out of the car, and it's so slow to get in the house and, you know... For him to not be able to get out of the cover even to get in the house, that's not very desirable. I was hoping if you have a place to get up, get out of the weather, allow him time to get in the house and, you know, anything that we've got with us to get in the house, not stand there in the rain.
Well, it's, it's still the overhang, you just, you're actually looking for an overhang there to keep dry it.
Well, I'm asking for the whole L shape to be covered, uh, I sent, uh, some colored, uh, big E-size drawing. Just to kind of portray what I was looking to do. I sent that, I don't know, two, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
What I did was I took all building elevations and just, uh, with a CAD program, kind of laid out where I wanted stuff, what I was thinking.
I think the problem right now is not knowing if you're going to be able to drive into that area anyways. And unload groceries and...
Well, if I can find, if I can get some kind of an engineer, engineer solution, uh, to go over that pipe that might be under the driveway, um, that's suffice.
Well, if you put the deck in there, you can't drive it through it, unless I'm misunderstanding.
What's that?
Is he talking about parking here?
Either driving over the top of these lines here or back over the top of the leach field of the distribution.
No, I, I, I don't want to go over the leach field if I, I'm not going to drive over the leach field. Um, I was hoping there was enough room in front of where, uh, God, I wish you had this drawn, uh, where the distribution box is.
We have the drawings, they're looking at the drawings.
Are you doing it?
It's on the board.
Am I inside seat?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Can you not see that, Brett?
Well, he's showing them up this way.
Oh. Yeah, they're...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not looking to drive over the leach field, I, I, you know, I, I know you can't do that.
We don't know how deep that line is. Your, yeah, your drainage line.
Typically thirty-six inches. Like, you come out of the bottom anywhere from twelve, like, the, from your, from your, where it comes out of there, it's got to go down at an eighth inch down over your leach field, so where it comes out of there is twelve to twenty-four at the most. So it'll go twenty-four inches down your forefoot, whatever your holding tank is, then going down there. So you have twenty-four inches, but that's just, we're talking about the parking issues that the neighbors brought up, that now you can only park one gar. And every time that, we have seen people pave or put concrete over the line going to there, if something breaks, it's on them.
Yeah.
But again, now he's taken away from his open space and green space, so now that's probably going to be another variance, when there's already side yard, front yard, rear yard, the whole deal. Once you take away, uh, impervious zone to put pervious, that, that could be another variance. Plus, then you take the risk of if he break it, you got to saw, saw... Plus, then you take the risk of if you break it, and you gotta saw, saw cut it up, that's on.
That's on them.
That's on them, that's not anything code, so one, you'd have to be, you'd be considering a possibly another variance. Two, is now go back to just dealing with, that was just the parking of, addressing the parking of one of the letters that the neighbors wrote. And then I have a couple other read in, and still on the structure that's actually built, not getting hung up on the parking.
Right.
So there is a couple other compounding issues here.
Definitely.
If, if, um, on the roadside, uh, that deck, instead of being a deck.
L-shaped. The, instead, you're talking about the L-shaped?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Around the front.
If, instead of it being a deck, if it was a cement platform or tiles or whatever, pavers, um, it could still be protected from, from rain, couldn't it?
As soon as you put the roof over it, you're still here for a variance.
Yeah, you're gonna be here.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's a wooden deck or a, a concrete patio, as soon as you put the roof over it, that's the extension.
Cause it's a structure. We don't consider concrete or pavers a structure, cause there's no code. But he's then gotta get the said person from that concrete up, and if his main concern is the roof and water and everything else, that's when the encroachment from the side in there becomes a variance, and the possibility of the open space, green space is another issue. The parking was, if, if it'll, uh. Is it Rick?
Mm-hmm.
Rick, we do have a couple letters, uh.
There's no way that we said that, we might have to read that along with the record.
We had two, two, uh, objections or issues, and then we have people in the audience that would also like to speak to this. And these were some of the, the board members got to read a very lengthy letter that was written by one of the neighbors across. And we have one from Roger Peppin that we read into the record, uh, that had quite a few issues. One of them, we were hoping not to read it in, but if you have not seen. Okay, so.
Just got that. So we'll open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. And anybody here like to speak, you can walk up to the microphone if you could, or bring the microphone to him.
It is your turn.
What we're complaining about is the rear side of his variance. It's about a foot from my house. I got pictures of it.
Yeah, we have the pictures.
Yeah, right now, we're just talking about that front one. We haven't got to the back one yet, we're just talking about the front one.
Whenever it snows, I get all the snow.
Put the microphone up to him, please.
When we get snow, I get all the snow. And we're out there hiring people to shovel the snow. And we don't know what to do. We can't get in our Bilko door. I mean, the house was built too close. And.
But that house was already there, right?
It should have been pushed over according to.
The foundation.
Altona said, whenever you got a situation like that, you push the, the floor plan over. And then you've got enough room. If they'd have pushed it over, they would have had enough room. And, and there wouldn't have been a problem, there wouldn't have been a problem with the sewer system.
They.
You got a problem.
They use, as far as I understand, the existing foundation.
I know, but when you use the existing foundation, you have to go to the next step. And according to Dean Lodge White, Altona said that you better go further over. And they own both lots, so why didn't you use the other lot?
I don't know that they own both lots, too.
Yeah, they do. It's on, it's on my deck.
We're talking about the front porch, Jerry. This is in regards to.
What's that?
This is in regards to.
Well, the front porch, the problem you're gonna run into over there is, it's a three-rod road. And a three-rod road, and the buses, they turn around in my yard, cause there's no other place, just don't turn around down there. So they use my driveway to turn around, so if he's got, if he's got a, a porch, and I'm not trying to stop him, the problem is if he's got a porch up there, and you got women's school bus drivers, and they goof it up, then who pays without a classmate? So we got a problem.
Thank you. Uh, do we wanna go into the other lots?
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna read into the record some of the other correspondence we got from March twenty-ninth from.
We're not gonna read these twice.
No, so for, this is for March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Brett, get your long one ready.
It's gonna come. So this is the first one, to whom it may concern, I just received the notification about the appeal twenty-three-ten and twenty-three-eleven for property at Three Firehouse Lane, requested by Walter Seemel. I would really prefer that these are not approved. The house was built without any consultation from the neighbors, and it is so much larger than the one-story home that sat there before. I wish I had been asked before this huge three-story home was built. It blocks the view that we used to have on the beautiful bay of Plattsburgh and Adirondack Mountains behind. For sure, I do not want to have even more view blocked by this covered deck protruding too close to the property line, well over the respective building code and regulations for setbacks. Unfortunately, I will be out of town for, of this hearing, so please accept this letter as the vote against these requests regarding Roger Peppin, Two Firehouse Lane, Plattsburgh, New York, one-two-nine-one-one. Now, the next one. The next one is from the neighbor directly across, the Allen can hopefully, uh, go, it is, uh, quite, Mr., uh. This is gonna be quite long, and we were gonna dispense reading it. This is some of the reasons that you'll understand of why the parking came up right off the bat, because the lengthy, uh, that's one of your neighbors wrote, and Brett's gonna read it into the record now.
So this was sent via email to our office on April eighth, twenty-twenty-four, by Jamie Goldstein. Good afternoon. Asked for our conversation earlier this morning, here's my email as my objection to granting the request, appeal number two-three-one-zero and appeal number two-three-one-one for Three Firehouse Lane in Plattsburgh, New York. I am five-point-five hours away and unfortunately will, will not be able to attend the meeting. This home was purchased without a car garage. There is only room for one parked car on yard property, which will no longer exist with the above requests. There is no street parking on this very small one-way road. We both live at the very end of this very small road, allowing for one car at a time. My home is on a hill, which makes it very difficult for any vehicle, including ambulances or fire trucks, to simply park or drive on or over my property from the road. I granted their, I grant, if granted, they lose their one parking space and can limit access to the small road. Regardless, there is no place for two or more cars on or around their property. I own Four Firehouse Lane, Plattsburgh, New York, one-two-nine-one-one, directly across the street, and I object to the granting of request and appeal number two-three-one-zero and appeal number two-three-one-one. The requests for Three Firehouse Lane are out of conformity with R four residential district, and does not meet the total sum of fifty feet front yard, front property line, property and side yard setback. Area variance to Article Three, Section three-point-two, Schedule B, Area Regulations. According to these appeals, they would not have a safe, accessible front yard, possibly no safe side yard in which encroaches the front property line or overpass front property in heavy snow during difficult winters. If the small one-way road at the end of our dead-end road, where we are located, is blocked by piles of snow, which often occur, or by their cars, neighbors' cars, service vehicles from night-sager flooding, black ice, then this is a fire hazard if emergency vehicles have difficulty accessing the fire hydrants on my front property on a hill. Or for any first-line responders needing to attend emergencies by passing their home, their frontline or go-pass front property lines. Subsections A, D, E, and F for New York State, Town of Plattsburgh, New York are not met, which create additional threat to public safety via increasing flood risk. Three Firehouse Lane is on the lake. Higher tides as expected last season, and states it's associated with property damage and increased rates. We're creating a fire hazard if fire hydrant is not easily accessible or road blocked. It is detrimental to the public to allow the construction of a six-foot covered deck on the roadside of the house that encroaches forty-four feet into the fifty-foot front yard setback leaving only six feet to the front property line. And encroaching nine-point-four-four feet into the twenty-feet, twenty-foot minimum side yard setback leaving ten-point-five-six feet to the side yard property line, it does not meet the total sum of fifty feet side yard setback in the R four residential district. The town's snowplow makes a wall of snow in front of our homes during winter and encroaches on the one-way road. This creates an exceptional hardship during the rough winter months when snow is piled very high in front of our houses on the one-way street directly in front of our homes. Any road block on our already small one-way road will have severe and significant consequences to us and the public. There is no safe indication to accept such a request. Goes on to state D, variances shall not be issued with a, within any designated floodway. If an increase in flood level during the base flood dis- discharge would result, the property is on the lake and the structure would not minimize flood damages but create additional flooding or flood damage and create a threat to our safety. It significantly, it's, I'm sorry, it significantly limits the area for floodwater to receive back into the lake, which is a flood hazard if limits access to relief. States E, variances shall only be issued upon a determination that the variance is the minimum necessary, considering the flood hazard for cord relief. Again, these requests are in violation of the section of the code. States F, variances shall only be issued upon receiving written justification of, one, a showing of good and sufficient cause that does not pose such a hazard to the neighbors, themselves, and the block, the pub, the public. This does pose many significant threats and hazards to myself, my family, my neighbors, included Roger Pepperin and the public. Two, a determination that failure to grade the variance would result in exceptional hardships to the applicant. They bought this home without a deck or a garage. There is no exceptional circumstances that overrules a fire hazard without enough room to access the fire hydrant on my property. No exceptional circumstances or hardships to the new neighbor to this which would or should ever take priority over damaged power lines on my property in front of their home needing emergency repairs. A medical emergency needing ambulances and or fire crews and easy access always overrules these types of requests. A determination that the granting of a variance will not result in flood height, additional threats to public safety, or extraordinary public expense, or create nuisances, cause fraud, or victimization of the public or conflict which, with existing local laws or ordinances. These requests do pose significant threats to public safety in conflict with existing local laws and ordinances. G, notification, one, an application to whom a variance is granted for a building with low floor below the base flood elevation should be given, given written notice over the signature of a community official that, A, the issuance of a variance to construct a structure below the base flood level will result in increased premium rates for flood insurance up to amounts as high as twenty-five for one hundred, twenty-five dollars for one hundred dollars of insurance coverage. And B, such construction below the base flood level increases risk to life and property. Subsection two, such notifications shall be maintained with the record of all variances, actions as required in Section one-seven-six dash one-four-H of this chapter. The requested variances are either less than five hundred feet of my property and above my property line. The property will either encroach on the small one-way street, block access to the one-way street, or above my property line, and is a threat to the public safety. These variances request viol, these variance requests violate Article Three, Section three-point-two, Schedule B, and subcu- subcategories, not meeting any criteria in the R four residential district it will make. The fire hydrant, power, and cable lines are all on my property and directly across the street from their home. Any interference or delay in accessing the fire hydrants will have catastrophic consequences. Any interference or delaying in repairing the power lines or cutting down large tree branches can have severe consequences. The street light in my property as well, the street light is in my property as well. These, this keeps the block safe. The requests will block the street light and therefore make it unsafe to drive down our small one-way road which ends just before approaching the lake. It decreases visibility and welcomes intruders, which pose another risk to public safety. Any interference or delay in medical attention and treatment will have dire consequences. Lastly, I am an obstetrician, gynecologist, first responder, I need to be able to respond to emergencies or deliver babies at any time. Without concern that these request variant, requested variances out of conformity with the Town of Plattsburgh Zone Ordinance, Article Three, Section three-point-two, Schedule B, Area Regulations might be granted, creating additional risk to public safety and have catastrophic consequences. Thank you for your notice. I appreciate the opportunity to object to granting of these requests by email.
Just wanna point out, the one that Rick just read is, is this house right here, this is for Firehouse Lane.
Yep.
The one that Steve read is this right here, this is Two Firehouse Lane. She kept referring this as a one-way road, this is a two-way road, okay? Here, it comes down. This is a turnaround, which we have an easement for, comes to the end of the road here. This is. You know, in the audience, this is his property, this is where he was talking about where they probably use his driveway to turn around. So I just wanna point out where everybody's at.
Do you want to put in the other text message that they got from the other, this is randomly?
Was that this?
Yeah, it's that.
So, I don't. It's.
He's, he mailed it to us.
Yeah, he ma, so, I can't, normally when you have somebody email, a letter, the whole deal, so this is.
Technically hearsay?
It's, 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 to me, it's too vague to be verifiable as to where it's from. I'm not saying anybody's trying to play any games, but I don't think there's anything contained in that text, good, better, or different that should let it to be read into the record, not knowing who exactly it's from.
Says hello, Rick, or do you go by Walter? Want to let you know, I have no problem with the decks you want to build around your new home. Just got the information from the Town of Plattsburgh regards Susan Raymelli, Ramalli?
Yes.
Okay. That.
He, uh, just purchased a pot, the, uh, she owned a property on the street, and she just purchased, uh, the property next to me as well.
Okay, so that is what we have for correspondence, Rick. That's, uh, were some of the concerns, the long drawed-out one we tried to dispense in there, but now at least you know that that came in. Those are letters against and the one, uh, for. So that's what the board has to determine, or some of the questions that they have to have answered. Uh, now, you can rebuttal whatever you'd like to go from there. The form is yours.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't understand, uh, you know, the bit about the snowplow. If, if I have a car parked off the road on my property in some fashion, I'm not blocking, uh, emergency vehicles. I'm not, uh, impeding the view or anything from either one of my next-door neighbors, nor the one across the street. All those houses will retain the same sightline as they've always had. Once this house is, you know, when, I don't know what the situation was before, uh, that house was built. I bought it under construction, I'm not the original owner.
I think originally, the house was a single-story house, and they could see right over the top.
But that seems to stand the, the test of going through the zoning and getting approved to build it, so. I don't understand why there's, you know, it's still coming up as an issue, but that that house is, is built there.
It's just.
So, uh, I'm, I'm a little disappointed here, uh, uh, so much, uh, public safety, number one. Uh, but this porch would not create any safety hazard, blocking no trouble, uh, no traffic. Like you said, it's a two-way lane, not a one-way lane. I have no control of the school buses coming down and turning around in another neighbor's driveway. That has nothing to do with me. Uh, you know, I don't know how snow on my porch roof is gonna cause flooding and, uh, you know, and have the lake rise to, to such an effect that it's gonna affect people's flood dam, uh, flood insurance. So, so much I heard, I don't feel pertained to what I'm trying to do here.
We just had to read that letter into record.
Um, yeah, well, I, I totally understand that, but, um, I think that's all I really have to say about the porch.
We can close the public hearing portion of this variance, then go to our board members and get their viewpoints on things.
Okay.
So it was brought up earlier, this is Patrick Duane, and I'm on the board here, and it was brought up earlier that you own a property next to you, to the north of your said property, is that right?
No, this Susan Raymelli, who wrote that text on my behalf.
Okay.
She owns that property as well as, I guess that would be five Firehouse Lane. And she also owns seven Firehouse.
It was just something that was brought up and I wanted to ask.
It was just something that was brought up and I wanted to ask. He wants your attention.
He just had a question.
The property next door is owned by the same people.
No, I'm saying, but he did have a letter as well, was that something?
Did you have a letter hand over to you guys?
You can bring it up and we'll put it into the record desk. I think your lawyer should see.
Give a copy of that.
That's basically what you were talking about.
To the left of that property, there's a whole big lot. There's no reason to couldn't use it.
He just owns three Firehouse Lane.
There's a different person that owns that property next to it.
Is that anything that has to be read into the record or?
Well, we closed the public hearing, I guess you could reopen it and.
Does it pertain to the front porch or the back porch?
It pertains to the front porch, but it's not by a neighbor, it's not by anybody that lives in the Town of Plattsburgh, it's written by somebody that Mr. Bernard went to for an opinion.
Oh, okay.
So not typically something we have as part of the public hearing unless that person's here to give that opinion and be asked questions to, so I would not, I recommend against having this be written as part of the record.
Rick, this is Roger Black, I'm a member of the board.
Hey Roger.
Can you explain why you need, are, are we just on the front?
Just on the front.
Never mind.
This is Henry Hale, I'm actually the chair of the board, and with your L-shaped deck in the front, where are your steps actually going to come to get you up to that elevation?
Well, I, I could either, I could either, well, I probably don't want to be running them any further than what I'm trying to build, so I would bury that within the footprint of that L. Somehow hopefully get it in there. So my stairs wouldn't protrude any further, if I could put stairs out the front, it protrudes closer to the road, but understand that, you know, this deck does not protrude any, my house is closer to the road than the porch I want to put on.
Yeah, I realize that, but with, with your steps, so you're still looking at what, three or four steps that you're going to have to put onto there?
Yeah, I think there's, it's probably three steps, why, you know, we really haven't done any grading or anything, so, all I have now into it is, is a, is a construction set of stairs, it's probably, it's two or three steps.
But he's, he's going to bury it within the, the structure, so it won't be sticking out. It'll be under the wall.
Yeah, if I can't go out, I'll bury it within the, within the structure.
I guess that's what I'm looking at, is saying then getting into the structure, you only have, how wide is that actual deck? Six feet, is it?
Six feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you go into there, you know.
Unless you give me a good, you know, at least a thirty, thirty-six inch landing, I would assume.
Yeah.
What we don't have also is the number is the maximal billable area is thirty percent. You can only build on an R four, which this is R four, right? R four is maximal buildable area is thirty percent.
And he's way over that to start with.
Well, I don't know.
It, it depends on what hit, so, keep in mind, all this right here, there's nothing built there.
Yeah.
So, when you cut, you know, so, this is part of his properties, this unbuildable area, which is probably goes towards percentage-wise, it's not necessarily grease pitch because water.
What, thirty percent? Not fifty, not sixty, thirty percent.
And we don't have that information.
I mean, right now, it sounds like you're looking for a couple informational items, like you're looking for, how's you gonna, how can you develop an approved parking area, and then what is the actual building square footage proposed?
Rick, do you have the original plot plan that RMS did that showed your open space, green space? That when you bought the house, do you have that survey map from RMS handing?
All I have from RMS, I sent you guys two drawings, two inside sheets, one that had details, some of the details with the septic, I just used that drawn.
Yeah, on that drawing, it should have a table.
So that, that is all the, that's the survey that they did in order to put the septic in there.
See if it shows that would.
Public hearing's closed. So, Rick, on your, if you have your, your, oh my God, Mr. Brown had a survey map done, plotted, Mr. Brown is the guy that you bought it from, sorry.
That's correct.
Tom Brown, he had a survey quality map done by RMS. What it showed was the original footprint of what was approved and it had a, on the left-hand side, it'll have a tables, it'll say open space, green space, le, uh, side yards, do you have that by any chance?
I do not, all I have was a septic design and with a permit. It was permitted when I, when I bought the property.
So in your closing statement or in your documents, I think that was, that's probably where it would be if you kept.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you broke up.
Did you, do you have, like, you know the package when you do your closing statements, and it should show a certified plot plan? Any, any chance you have that? So on that plot plan, it'll say open space and green space, and for some of the, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to dumb it down or anything, but on, it's called open space and green space, that you have to have a percentage of your property, along with your side yards, front yards. On there, RMS did a calculation to show what the percentage of the lot that is covered with buildable area, and if you've already exceeded that, that would be another variance, and this is your questions that the board is trying to answer. They have to have these answers before they hit the balancing test of whether the variance can be achieved other methods, and does it trigger any other variances, also with the parking, things that are brought up. So these are some of the questions that you, you kind of have to have the answer to for the board to move forward.
Okay. I can, I can certainly look into to find that certified plot plan, if it's not in my closing package, I will contact RMS and get that number, get that survey. You know, I also have this old existing structure that's on the property that, you know, if I run into a jam and, you know, the only way I can free up that grease space, then I may get rid of that existing outbuilding.
But you still got to make the, the balancing test, that the change, the change, you still got to make through all those other five things, I wouldn't want you to say I'm going to tear down a structure on the lake. If you can't get through one through five, you'd have to be able to get through the questions for not only the front porch, but the, or I'm sorry, the roadside porch along with the, the, the one on the lakeside, so you have to achieve the variance for both sides. So before you start negotiating stuff away, that you could never have back because of.
Oh, no, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that without, you know, uh, because I found out exactly what I had to work with, so, yeah, I'm not going, I'm not, I'm not even up there, so, I'm not going to be tearing down anything.
I just want to try to give you the totality of what the board is looking for.
Understood, okay, certified plot plan. Now, do I also need to have the engineer that did the septic come up with some kind of a a remedy to be able to drive over a portion of the pipe or, you know, they designed it, so.
I would say that would be very helpful.
Okay, all right, I will.
And I would think that you would want to request that we would table this matter so that you can get that information for us, so we can act in a little bit more professional way to say if we're good or bad.
Yeah, no, yeah, no problem, I will get those, I'll get those two things to you, do I just submit that to the building department? Anybody in particular or?
And Rick, I want to say, just if you get the two things, it doesn't mean the variance is going to be granted. That's why we're not saying if you get these two things, then all the rest of the questions, but if they can't even get by question one, can the change, or would the change created under the change in the narrative or the neighborhood, or whether the applicant can achieve his goal by semi-meths, they don't even go to questions three, four, and five.
Right, right, no, I understand, I totally understand what I need to do.
You know what the balancing test items are, correct?
Yes, I do, that's the certified plot plan, that tell me green space versus the other space. Is it a fifty percent rule?
There's a balancing test that we have to go through, and there are five questions.
Okay.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, so if you're staying favors or factored in that, that could be something.
Those are the five, same five questions he answered when turning the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I covered all those in the letter that I explained.
Okay, all right. But those are the things that we're going to be looking at.
Understood, no, and I understand that by, you telling me that I just, I need to re-submit these two, it doesn't guarantee anything, so I understand that.
So you're requesting that we table it, right?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion now.
And we second vote, and I'll vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes, that's for the whole process.
Should I keep going?
Keep going.
I didn't want to interrupt.
No.
Roger Black.
I, yes.
Marian Alexandra. Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Melanie Martin.
Yes.
Now, do you guys want to discuss the second one, because you have any questions about, because you have a discussion with your deck?
Yeah, but doesn't that also?
It would still apply to that too, but.
Yeah, I mean. Your buildable area.
Right.
Would be.
But I would hate for, I'd hate for you guys to go next month, you've inherited the information that you asked for, then you realize, oh, well, we didn't actually discuss the back deck, we need this, this, and this as well. He's, he's on the agenda for that back deck, you should discuss that and make sure nothing else is needed. My opinion.
Yeah.
If you don't want to. That's another question for the overall.
So we're going to be in the same boat.
That is correct.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, we can look at the back deck, which is, well, actually with that building there, it's still closer to not as great as variance as the building would be right now, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, it's, the house is closer to next door than anything that I'm proposing you do.
And your.
I'm sorry, if I'm, if I'm speaking at a, at a turn here.
No, you're good.
No, all right, thank you.
And your, your shed building is also closer to the, to the seawall and to your, your average
Yeah.
lake line, I guess, I would say, also.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's no roof on that one, correct, or is there?
Well, I have like a little eyebrow that I want to put over there, just so that the, the rainwater doesn't wash down the faces of, of buildings and then drip in front of the doors, because that's the gable end faces the lake. So when it's been during rain, I put, I want to put a little, you know, maybe a a two or four foot deep, I think I showed on my, my sketch, my drawing, just some kind of cover out there.
It says fourth party.
The, the green area there, yeah, okay. I can open the public hearing portion, this is about the rear yard now, do you want to speak to that one? No, he's okay, all right. And we read into the record all the other letters, so we can close with the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any board members have any concerns with the rear?
Well, I would like, this is Roger Black, board member. Why do you need, or why do you feel you need twelve feet for the lakeside deck?
Okay, as I mentioned before, I've got a son that's got, was born with serious physical disabilities, and then he had a broken hip, so he really stroves to get around. I'm trying to give him, you know, as much space to be outside without having to traverse stairs up and down. I'd like to give him an area of refuge, so he can just go out and enjoy being outside. Because he's very, he's not real mobile, he has a tough time walking on, on grass because it's unlevel. So it's, it's, it's for him, just so he has some space to be able to go out and enjoy the lake. That's, that's it, for him.
So this is Marian Alexandra, a member of the board, and my question is, if your son has difficulty walking, you have stairs proposed going up to these decks, would it make sense to, or how is he going to get up and not, you know, there's no ramp proposed, it's just steps.
Right, he, he, he can get upstairs, it takes him a, a long time, he struggles, like, he can get up there, it's not something that I'd like to, you know, for him to do all the time. Because he's a very indoors person, doesn't really go outside that much, so, once he's home, he's kind of not homebound, but he doesn't, you know, he's not getting out of the house all day.
If you're in, living in Florida right now, or you're in Florida.
Yes, sir.
How long would you be living, from when to when would you be living in this house?
Well, our plan is we retire in about a year and a half. And we will spend most of our time up north and still have a place down here in Florida, we're, our house is on the market currently, and we're looking at downside, just have a place to, to escape to, to get out of the dead of winter. But we'll spend as much time up there as we can, like this past winter up there, I've been three miles after last week, and I was parked for that snowstorm up there, so I got a little shock there. But the lean hand on you is making that our majority of the time spent there.
Yeah, one of the questions would be, as Marian stated, does it have to be twelve feet, could it be ten feet or eight feet or?
Can you, can you give me, can you give me ten feet?
We're, we're not negotiating, I'm just asking a question, would it,
Oh, okay.
Would it be satisfactory to you, I would say?
That question to me, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
If, if we could negotiate that.
No, we're not negotiating.
That would make me happy, I'd be, I'd be up for that.
Rick, what, what they're wanting to know is, you picked the number twelve feet, did you just pick it out of your head just because that sounded right, or are you?
Well.
Did it fit furniture or something, or what?
My, my thinking was, in the beginning, very rude and crude, as I looked up north and, up, actually north and to south of me, you know, all these people have their, their decks hanging over, and can leave her, you know, over the, over the seawall, so I was thinking, man, that's a great thing to do, maybe I'll do that. And then common sense got a hold of me, you know, it's such a small lot, I know there's setbacks and all that, so I just, you know, I put in twelve feet because I think that's a good enough space for my son to be out there enjoying the waterfront and, I mean, I just, I just picked that, there's no, like, no medically necessary, you know, reason to go twelve feet.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, if, if we, if we, if we would need to play with that a little bit to make, make this right, then I would be open to that.
All right, we appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
So then we still have the question of the actual coverage of thirty percent buildable area, so that was.
And that might be part of it too, maybe he could cut that back to ten feet in order to get his proper coverage.
So, well, we will ask you if you want to table this one too for now, until we get the further information.
Uh, well, I mean, what, what more information would you be?
Well, it's going to be with your coverage thing.
That's a great way. Uh, yeah, yeah, I guess we would do both those, they're both waiting for the same, same kind of information, so.
Yes.
I mean, I would, that'd be fine, so what would we do, just reschedule it for the next board meeting?
Soon as we can get the information here and they would get you on the, onto the docket for that.
Perfect, perfect, okay.
And so we would make a roll call, say that we're going to table the second lakeside variance.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexandra.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Melanie Martin.
Yes.
All right, and thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it, you're.
Have a good night.
All right, you too, thank you.
And, which one of you brave people's going to say?
Oh, yeah, make a motion here.
Dismissed, yeah, cheated.
Who seconded?
All of us. And we.
We think it's not about a court.
And we missed Mr. Farrow by ten minutes, so.